I'm calling the meeting to order at six oh four P M. And if everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are going to call the public budget hearing to order at six oh four P M. It is appropriate to select a chairperson for this annual election and budget vote. This chairperson will conduct the meeting and will open and close the polls on Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District to appoint Stacy Black as annual meeting chairperson. They have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
I like.
Any opposed? Any abstain? But you must learn.
Okay, welcome. I'm not very good at speaking in front of people. Um, so I will introduce the board members. To your far left is Dr. Christine Woodall. Brian Jenner. Amy Maslin. Thomas Tazfer. And our board president, Stephanie Chanty. And missing tonight is Tiana Moesman and our vice president, Catholicus. And now we introduce our superintendent, Miss Sacks too. Who is going to lead the project presentation.
Yeah, welcome. Um, we're gonna review the budget that we put together for the coming school year. Before we do, just a little reminder for you. Right on this slide, you sort of advise what this school district is all about. We are here for the kids, the kids of a point as our slogan, and that's the driving motivation for everything we do in our, in our districts. Our official and formal district mission is to provide an excellent education, ensuring that all children maximize their potential and become contributing citizens. And pursue lifelong learning. And our district vision is to be a community of excellence achieved through a commitment to high performance, morale, and involvement. Whenever we look to the thought for the year that follows the year that we're in, you think about these main concepts. One, focus on education. That's why we exist. We're here to educate the students of the Whitney Point School District. Two, we always have to think about sustainability. So we're not just thinking about next year, but we're thinking about making sure the district is in good shape for years to come. And then obviously, we always have to be conscious of reasonable tax levy because that significantly impacts our community. For twenty-three, twenty-four, our proposed budget is outlined right here. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is on the top line. It was thirty-eight billion, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and seventy-four, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. So you can see on the next line, forty-one million, three hundred thousand dollars is our twenty-three, twenty-four budget and proposed very significant increase of six point six five percent. Um, we're gonna talk in the next couple of slides about some of the things that are impacting this budget, some good, a number of things that are good. Um, and then some of the impacts of all of the things that we're dealing with all in our own personal lives, the cost of things that are, have dramatically gone up. And then some costs that we have related to the project that we are starting. Uh, our proposed tax levy increase is one point oh three percent. Um, and in our district, that gets us eighty-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars. And again, that is, um. In really looking at sustainability, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit more. Um, our revenue projection, uh, state aid in the current year was a little over twenty-nine million dollars. In the coming year, it's thirty-one, over thirty-one and a half million dollars. That's a significant, significant change, or two, almost two and a half million dollar increase in aid. And for us as a school district, we are very dependent on state aid. And there's a lot of history here, and I'm gonna go through that very briefly. But in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, VR State, as a result of a lawsuit, came up with something called the Foundation Aid Formula. And the idea of that formula was to make sure that districts across the state could provide an equitable education. It's factoring in all the things, all the unique, uh, factors in their districts, the tax base, their population, the details of their population. Um, and that was the foundation aid formula that was developed. There was a couple of years of implementation where we were supposed to phase into the two funding schools using that formula. And they started along that path, and then we had a national crash in our, in our economy in the country, and they stopped and took back funds. So since those years, two thousand, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we have been underfunded our foundation aid formula. And for us, that has meant that every year we have to be very, very careful about what we do. Um, we are, uh, because we, uh, you'll, you'll see in a minute, uh, the amount of funding that we get from the state and the federal government, uh, is largely how we run our district. We are at the mercy of, of those funding lines. And so since those years, we have been essentially underfunded and living along trying to do the best that we can for our students. So with this budget, which was not officially passed, although they, they say that any minute that's gonna happen in Albany. We will be fully funded for the first time. So this is, this is huge for us. Um, other revenues, there's a slight difference. You can see there, we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, appropriated fund balance, um, from year to year, we always put a little, you know, money away, uh, in, in, from budget to budget. Again, that's about sustainability. And as you can see, the tax levy increase, if you look at the size of our, the aid and the amount that we get from, um, local property taxes, that's there on the bottom line. The difference, as I said in the previous slide, is eighty-eight thousand dollars. So a little more detail on the distribution of revenue that funds our school district. For us, our total state aid is seventy-six point four nine percent of our budget. So when I say that we've been underfunded all these years, that has really impacted what we can and can't do in our district. And we've always tried to be very frugal and very thoughtful about, um, how we spend money and, and be strategic in planning for the future. We're gonna continue to do that, but it's nice to not have to be walking on thin ice and, and always knowing that we were not getting the, the aid that we're supposed to get. Um, our tax levy, you can see there is twenty point eight nine percent. Budget by component comparison, um, you can see here, there's a, you know, just a slight change in the percentage from this current school year to next school year. Um, but the big thing to notice there is that the bulk of our costs are in program, and that is doing the work that we need to do. That's making sure that kids are teaching and learning. That's funding all the things that make that very directly happen in our district. Um, we're gonna talk in more detail about what the capital and the administrative budget looks like. But again, we always, we make sure that the dollars are going as directly as possible to benefiting students and making sure that our school is functioning the way, um, it has to. The administrative component, so what is that? Um, that is salaries and benefits of administrators, supervisors, and support staff. Um, it's also things like public information and central printing, legal services and insurance, which are, you know, pretty sizable expenses for our district our size. Um, a board of education and administrative costs, financial operations, and most of these administrative and capital costs all are within this portion of the budget. The increase, um, from last, this current school year to next school year in our projected budget is one point seven percent in this category. When you break that out a little more clearly, board of education, um, there is a pretty significant jump at that, and that is because the school board has, um, contracted with the school boards association. Um, for the first time in a very long time to make sure that they are getting the education and, and training that they need, that they can make really wise decisions for our school district. Um, central administration, uh, is central administration. It's, you know, it's a pretty sizable, uh, expense to have people who are overseeing, um, everything, all the operations in the school district. Uh, finance is our in-house finance department, plus, um, we contract out for, uh, central business office through BOPC's. Um, legal and printing is, is our heavy cost and our printing costs. Um, special items, there's lots of things listed in there that don't fall into any of these other categories pretty much. Uh, curriculum and development is the curriculum and development supervisors and all the materials and professional development that, uh, goes to all the people on our staff and faculty. Supervision, regular school supervision, other is all the supervisors, some of the things that happen in our district. And employee benefits, as anybody who knows and works in a business, is a big chunk, um, of, of the expenses that, uh, are for any business that is all about human beings. Capital component, yes, Chris?
Can we just go back to that slide just because I think right now is a really good point that the board of education that increased has nothing to do, we do not get paid. However, um, for many years, maybe Stephanie, you can help me, maybe it was ten years or so that the school hasn't belonged to NISBA?
More than.
More than ten years. NISBA is the New York State Association Board. Um, and in the Broome County Section Four, we were one of the only two school districts that had not been part of that association. That association gives us as board members amazing materials, um, experience, conferences, things that we need as board members. Nothing about us being paid. It's only about us knowing what to do for the school district. And so that is that difference. It's not about us having any money. So I just want everyone to know that, that we are grateful for the school district doing that. And I have taken great advantage, as has all the other board members, in that being part of that association again, and I think it's really important for us.
So yeah, as you can imagine, being a school board member, you are involved with or making decisions about very, very important legal decisions all the time. And then you have to have a pretty good understanding of, uh, education law, which is different than what, you know, the rest of the world is familiar with. So that training is very important. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Julie.
So, um, capital component, uh, the adopted budget this year is seven, um, point seven million, eight hundred thousand. Uh, and there's a slight increase of point two four percent. Um, that is really salaries and benefits for custodial staff, operations and maintenance and security, debt service on buildings and capital projects, school bus purchases and capital outlay projects. Not that big of a change from year to year. The capital component, uh, here, adopted budget this year to, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, post-budget broken out by, uh, specific area within that category. And you can just see here, I don't, I don't know if you wanted, do you want to speak really quickly to the debt service? I mean, this is something that if you're in the school board, you know, changes from year to year, um, has a lot to do with financing the projects. Um, and then, uh, we have some shifting in, in funds that we've done this year, which we've talked with the board about also. Um, because we have this project coming up and a lot of things that we had planned to have in a project, we are not able to fund through the project just because of the inflation that's happened since the vote. Um, we're expending some funds in these lines to make sure that we have what we need to make sure that all the new facilities are up to par. Do you want to speak on the different services?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, again, you can kind of see, uh, overall, the capital component is very similar from year to year. Uh, but what she points out is a debt service, there is a pretty good reduction in that line item. And that, uh, line item does correlate with the revenue side to what we get back from state aid for building aid. So again, those lines are, are kind of contingent upon each other. So if you have the debt service, that's our payments for all of that that we borrow. Uh, again, we're, uh, you know, due to our demographics, we have a very high, uh, building aid ratio, which is close to ninety-eight percent right now. Uh, so what that means is ninety-eight percent of every dollar we spend for the building projects and, uh, other things of that nature, we get that money back in state aid. So even though we have the expense payment going out, we're getting that right back in the, in the form of state aid for building aid. So, you know, we have a, a drop in that debt service line. That means our payments for that debt we borrowed over the years for projects. There's a, a, a drop. That means our state aid for the building aid portion is also gonna be less.
Everything's interrelated. So the program component, and as I said, um, beginning of this, um, this is, uh, kind of the meat and potatoes of, of what we do here in our district. Um, and in every school district, we have a significant increase, nine point oh six, um, percent in this category. Um, and that includes all the salaries and benefits for teachers, counselors, aides, monitors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists. Um, programs for students with disabilities in special schools, mandated training and professional development, library, media, computer services, instructional hardware and software, textbooks, materials, supplies, and instructional equipment. Trans student transportation and athletics and co-curricular activities. So this is a huge part of our budget. And as you might imagine, in these areas, th- there are, you know, significant cost increases, um, due to things that are happening in the society that is bigger than us. As we break it down a little bit more, teaching regular school, you can see the growth there, um, from year to year, programs for students with disabilities. This is an area that can change dramatically from year to year depending on, um, the needs of our students. And if we sometimes have a student or two move in with very high needs, that's can be, uh, a pretty significant addition to that category in the budget. Um, teaching special schools also, um, those are costs, um, to, uh, educate students with special needs. Instructional media, uh, also is something that has gone up, uh, food personnel services, athletics, co-curricular, um, people transportation, employee benefits. Again, we know that those costs really rarely go down, uh, recreation, um, that has to do specifically with our pool. That's why it's zeroed out because in the coming year, we will not have our pool, um, functioning. And inter-fund transfer is, um, a, a specific category. Do you want to explain that?
Uh, I guess, sure. Um, so there's a portion of our summer transportation, uh, for both these related, uh, services that we get, uh, special state funding for. Uh, it's really just required to be a separate line item. So the inter-fund transfer is basically money that is going to be put into our grant fund. So that's the money that goes in there, and then we get, again, a portion of that money back in the grant fund, uh, as, as another form of state revenue.
So for the, this piece of our budget, which is the biggest, probably most important part of our budget, um, the year-to-year change is nine point oh six percent. Um, this is the part of the budget that, you know, if we're talking about our foundation aid being made whole, um, this is where we're gonna, you know, spend our money in, in educating students in the most direct way. So how are my school taxes calculated?
Then we all get side during. All right. So I think, uh, people have been here, uh, coming, uh, multiple years are familiar with this slide. It looks very busy. Uh, but I think it does a very good job of explaining, um, school, uh, tax rates, individual town assessments, and equitation rates. And trying to get down to, uh, some kind of comparison amongst our neighbors. Um, so again, to not completely, uh, make everyone go crazy, uh, jumping around the slide. Um, I'm gonna kind of go from the top and then focus on, uh, Barker on the left-hand side. So you can see our current tax levy, uh, for the school year is eight point five million. And then you can see, uh, how do we actually divvy up that tax levy amongst all of the property in our school district? And so what we get from, uh, the local town assessors, um, is basically, and, and I guess it, it's interesting to know, I should point it out. Uh, Whitney Point, we are vast. We, we are a massive district in, in terms of, of land size. Uh, it's a hundred and forty square miles. We have, um, property, uh, in four counties, uh, Broome, Tyoka, uh, Shenango, Portland. Um, and if you see the eleven different municipalities that make up Whitney Point Central School District. Uh, there are some schools out there that they literally have in one town. So it's a way easier to slide. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna try my best on it, but I do think it's important to, so you guys know why there's so many different, uh, townships on here. Um, it's, it's really just due to our rural demographics. Uh, so again, uh, we have a current tax levy of eight point five million. How do we divide that up amongst our residents? Uh, those towns, uh, the counties, they give us basically their record of the assessments of all the property value in their respective township. So if you take up all the property in Whitney Point Central School District, there is roughly three hundred and eighty-five million dollars of property within Whitney Point School. Um, so it's again, massive number, right? Um, and that number is, does the house, it's land too. So it's anything that has a property value. Um, so then, if you go down here, we, we look at each town and their portion of what is that total profit per town. So the township of Barker, uh, they represent a pretty good share of that. It's eighty-eight point seven million dollars of property in the town of Barker. You can actually go down, uh, the column there if you want to see some of the other townships. Um, but then what do we, what do we do with that? Well, the state, uh, determines this equalization rate that changes every year. And what the state's trying to do is make up for, um. Basically, they, they want an equal level playing field. Uh, not every single property in your state is assessed any. I mean, that would be a ridiculous project and, uh, it, it would be impossible. So what you see is, uh, sometimes have reassessments every few years, um, some don't ever have that. Uh, and what does that mean? Uh, basically, if you have a new reassessment, your property values are gonna be current to, uh, inflation, and they're gonna be reflective of what they're actually worth. So what that means is the state looks at when your last, uh, assessment was, they have formulas, and they look at a pairs of data. And what they end up saying is, county Barker, uh, whatever your property value is, it's really only reflected eighty-five percent of what it's actually worth. And I'll tell you, this past tax year was the first time I seen major movement in all the townships. And it does make a lot of sense when we know, uh, again, really, I think, as a side effect of COVID and all this free money that was passed around, uh, we saw the inflation property values everywhere. So what happened is, again, we had now property values skyrocketing, but, uh, the assessment's not keeping up, right? So Barker was at a hundred percent a year or two ago, now they're at eighty-five percent. So what that means again is basically whatever you're assessed at, your home's worth so much money, county Barker, they're saying it's really only eighty-five percent accurate. So we take that and we're gonna go down here. So now, we know what we got for property valuation in the towns. We're saying, well, we know those aren't really accurate. So now we have these equitation rates to give us the true value of property in all the townships. Uh, and we need that in order to spread our levy around it equally. So with that number, Barker, again, they're only at eighty-five percent of what they're actually worth. You apply that percentage for what we're saying in Barker, even though your assessed value is only eighty-eight million dollars. It's really worth a hundred and three million dollars, right? And so again, we take that, uh, methodology and we apply it against all the townships. So now we know what are, and you can see that, um, it's the third yellow goldie, uh, county, the true value of all the property in the district. So if the assessed value rule, we're saying it's worth three hundred and eighty-five million, uh, the state says, no, 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 Whitney Point, you guys really have four hundred and ninety-five million dollars that should be taxed. So again, uh, in, uh, side note, that, that's pretty amazing. We have almost, uh, you know, half a billion dollars of property in our district, right? That's pretty cool. Um, anyway, now we have something we can go off of. All our towns at equal value, we're not, you know, there's no favoritism. The successor's not giving their neighbors some breakdown in their assessment. Uh, the state came in and said, no, all this property now is, uh, valued equally. All right. So now we can see Barker, your hundred and three million dollars in relation to the real property in all of our district represents roughly twenty point nine one percent. Of our, uh, of our district. So again, what we're doing is we're figuring out the total value, the true value of property in Barker. And we want to figure that out. What is their percentage of our tax? All right. So we're saying is Barker is gonna be responsible for twenty point nine percent of the school tax. And then again, you kind of go down, you can see the different townships and what their responsibility is of the Whitney Point tax base. So then when we go down there, um, we figure out where we need our eight point five million dollars in taxes. We multiply that by Barker's share of the twenty point nine percent. Barker residents will be responsible for one point eight million of that school tax levy. Again, you keep going down to see what each individual township, uh, contributes to school taxes. Obviously, Barker is a big one, one point eight million. Uh, some are very small. Some of these townships are very small. Uh, um, you know, green, uh, there's four and sixty-seven dollars. There may only be a handful of actual property in the township of Green. But we still get that four and sixty-seven dollars in school taxes. So now that we, uh, know how much, um, again, tax money, we're gonna be getting from the townships. We can apply that amount and develop a tax rate. So, and you can see, every township's gonna have their own tax rate. And again, that goes off of what their actual assessed value is going to the top. So even though Barker is assessed to eighty-eight million, that's still what the tax rate gets applied to, okay? So when you look at, uh, a different township, um, I'm gonna pick, um, Smithville, uh, they're at only fifty-four percent. So their overall value of property is gonna be listed way low. So when you do the equation rate game or trying to equal playing field, their tax rate is gonna be way higher because we're taxing, again, a lower assessed value property. I know it gets a little messy, so I'm gonna go to the next slide. I think it'll better explain that. Um, so that whole slide, we break it down into this little example. Hopefully, it's way easier. Uh, so again, we like round simple numbers. We're gonna say, uh, we have a hundred thousand dollar, uh, assessed property. And each of these three municipalities, we're gonna throw in the example. I never used to have to do the example because we always had, it's one of our townships at, uh. Focus on the green. So in a perfect world, um, property is assessed for a hundred thousand. The state says, yes, you guys just got reassessed. Everything's accurate. Your properties are right. Your equation rate's a hundred percent. That means your true value is a thousand dollars. So when we look at that in the school, again, uh, based off tax rates and everything else, uh, the, the actual tax rate based off of true value. Uh, again, what that means is if you had a hundred thousand dollars and it was the true value, you're paying seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents per a thousand dollar property. Um, and if we can go to the slide next, that, that, that number, uh, we go back, dump it out of here, uh, and that's okay. So it's important to just know what that is in the example, uh, column, uh, row there. So when we go over to these different townships, we can kind of see how this, how this, uh, really extrapolates. So Richford, a hundred thousand dollars, equals eight rate ninety-two percent. What does that mean? It means even though you're assessing a hundred thousand dollars in Richford, your true value is only a hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's what you should be getting taxed on. And if you look at the other ones, Triangle, again, a hundred thousand dollars. State says, no, that's only really eighty-seven and a half percent of what's really worth. You're really, uh, your properties are really worth a hundred and fourteen thousand. And then picking on Shenango here, we want someone that is, again, is way low. Uh, if you live in Shenango and you're, you're assessed a hundred thousand dollars, um, you know, um, what does it say? And the state says, no, 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 your value of property is really worth a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So this is how you can have three houses, three properties in a row that all look like they're assessed equally a hundred thousand, but they're not. The true value of these is very great. It's all about the equation rate to try to make them equal and how you distribute the taxes. So again, it's going down a little bit more. You can see what that tax rate is. Again, perfect world, everything's assessed the way it should be, nice, neat, you know, that's not how the world works. Uh, you should be paying seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents. Well, you can see, uh, the tax rate's gone eighteen seventy-four because again, the equation rate drops out nine-two, nineteen seventy-one. Correlated to the drop in equation rates all the way to Shenango, where again, their tax rate is way high because their equation rate is basically saying, you guys aren't assessed anywhere where you need to be. So that a hundred thousand dollar assessed value property, um, again, if you equalize it, you can see how, even though you're assessed a hundred thousand dollars, your tax bill can vary greatly. Um, and that's really the state way of saying, again, we're equaling the playing field. I'm gonna pay their fair share. Can we go to the next slide? So this is that slide I was talking about when we, uh, gave this to the board back in, I think, March. Um, everyone wants to know, what does that mean? Seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents per a thousand, uh, dollar of property. What does it mean in relation to where we live, right? Uh, I personally don't care about land, what line I live in. And I'm not gonna live, right? I wanna know what our neighbors up here. So if I am looking for a house and I am concerned about taxes, you know what? This is the slide I think means a lot. I, I would like to know, Whitney Point, I know the body of education we provide, uh, in relation, a thousand dollars of real property. I can expect to pay seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents for that thousand dollars. And you can kind of see, we're regrouped, uh, other similar districts. Um, you can, both our size, whether it be budget, our demographics, uh, like, uh, North Valley, we're all kind of in that little category of seventeen, eighteen dollars, right? Or Windsor, eighteen, thirty. I think that's a good place to be, and I'm, I'm happy that we're on the lower end of the scale. Honestly, if we're on a higher end of the scale, I probably won't show you guys a slide because it doesn't do any good to show you. Honestly, if we're on a higher end of the scale, I probably might show you guys a slide because it doesn't do any good to show you. Whitney Point's one of the highest uh districts uh for tax rate, that would look bad, right? So we show this slide and this is great, we're saying that Whitney Point in relation to school taxes. Uh, where, where we pay taxes that are actually fairly low in our region. And what, how can we do that? We can do that, the, the ones that our state aid covers seven, six percent of our budget, right? So that's the gap. Um, and then again, there's a whole next to everything else goes in between there. There's the, you know, the false uh impression that because you're invested, your taxes are going to be so sky high. That's not true either, you can see vessels, you know, twenty dollars and seventy eight cents. The reason vessel has such a big tax base is a lot of business in the area. Um, so you can kind of see prepare, hope your neighbors make fun of where we know what this is playing about, they're paying the highest taxes in the region. We go on the next slide. Um, again, this is a slide we just go, we're familiar with it, it's in the newsletter. Uh, people that like this information, i- it's here. Uh, basically, where were our tax rates and where do they go? Um, and this is the average tax rate, so it's not the true rate of the seventeen point four. But roughly you can see that uh for the normal resident point, you pay around twenty dollars and sixteen cents per a thousand dollar value. Um, that's going to go up about twenty one dollars a year, right? And we try to make it feel better by saying it's only six cents today. We go on the next slide. Any questions on any of the tax calculations?
So I'm just along those lines, I mean, it's, it's good for Zach to explain that every year just because it is not that straightforward how, um. The tax levy is, is figured and how it impacts of people who live in different townships. And in our district, as he said, we have so many different townships, um, that it can be very dramatic. Also, all, all of their categories, it, it can be, you know. It is very specific how the, the different expenditures within our district are, are uh tagged. They're categorized by the way the state says that we have to have a budget for these items. So sometimes they don't always make sense. So if you have a question about any of the specifics that we've done, we can always talk about those after the fact. So to the big picture, um, accomplishing our budget goals, again, everything that we've talked about uh is uh. Is fueled by the fact that we are an institution that exists to educate the students of Whitney Point. So our focus is on education. We have to think about sustainability, so even though we are being made whole by state aid and that's really, really significant for us. That we have added in one, a one point, uh, a little over one percent tax increase because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And we have to think that we, we don't want to set ourselves up for a cliff and make sure that we're just planning in a way that makes sense. Um, uh, and we don't have big swings in our, in our budgets from year to year. Um, and when we think about what a, a tax rate increase would be, you know, most districts um in, in our area are going out with, with their tax levy allowances. Um, we didn't do that because we are also at the same time while we're thinking about sustainability, we're realizing the impact that that has on our community. So we tried to be very conservative there. So to summarize, um, obviously we're focused on expanding enrichment opportunities and providing additional supports to students in the coming year. Um, we are still dealing, dealing with many uh significant impacts from the destruction of the, of the pandemic to uh learning our students. Um, looking at it for every opportunity to increase our exposure to STEAM and career technical programs to support and integrate with up, upcoming capital project renovations. Um, as we've discussed, a lot of things were cut out of our budget, but we're still looking to carve out ways to have innovative spaces. Um, particularly the one that we have sustained in the, in the current plans is the third floor of the TRA, turning that into a, an innovative space for learning. Um, continue to partner and grow all our partnerships and arrangements uh through the, throughout the district. This is something that is a core and foundational in what we do. We are a municipal district, um, you know, we often, you know, don't, don't have the same funds as other districts too. So we really try to leverage our partnerships and work with other agencies in the communities. We, we have many people from other places working with our children and our families in our district. Um, here because we are the hub of the, of the community. Uh, continue to provide our students and community with resources and facilities that are top notch and innovate. We try to make sure that a student who comes to Whitney Point is going to have access to facilities that are of, of excellent quality. And that, um, we're going to prepare them for life out after, um, they graduate. Um, continue responsible stewardship of our facilities. So in, as I mentioned before, funding things to make sure that, that this school district, which is of value to the community. Is kept in good standing and uh because actually the school district enhances the property values for people who live in our community. And we're doing a good job of taking care of, um, everything that is within the school district's property. And continue our hundred thousand dollar capital outlet improvement projects. Um, there's been talk of trying to increase this amount because even when we don't have a huge project, there are lots of things that have to be taken care of up in our facilities. So we, you know, keep funds there to make sure that we are doing smaller projects. And then as I mentioned, we're not going out with our, the amount that we can go out for, um, uh, we're allowable tax levy increase. But we are going out with a, a conservative amount of one point oh three percent in this budget. So the budget proposition, um, shall the Board of Education? Okay. So the Board of Education, the Whitney Point Central School District be authorized to appropriate for the budget, the sum of forty one million, three hundred and sixty seven. Hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars for the twenty three, twenty four school year. And levy the necessary tax therefore with a projected tax levy increase of one point oh three percent. And the proposition for the election of the Board of Education members. Uh, we have three three-year terms and one one-year term that will be up for election. Um, these seats are presently held by Kathleen Driscoll, Mr. Eddie Naslin, Tom Tasper and Brian Jekker. And the candidates for these seats are, um, Tom Tasper, Eric Spelly, Molly Willis, Tom McGrath. And any other potential rated candidates. The three candidates with the highest vote count will be awarded the three year, uh, year term positions. These terms will commence on July first, twenty twenty three. And we have a bus proposition, a separate proposition being placed on the May sixteenth ballot, seeking voter approval to borrow money to purchase school vehicles. We, uh, as Zach mentioned, we are a very large school district and our fleet is very important, um, to make sure that it's uh, uh, up to par and functioning, uh, well. So, so the next proposition is shall the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District be authorized to purchase three new seventy one passenger diesel buses? And two new thirty five passenger gas buses to expend therefore not to exceed the estimated total cost of seven hundred and ninety seven. Thousand three hundred and sixty six dollars, and we can look at that beautiful rainbow over our buses, that's like one of the best pictures ever. And just a little bit of information, um, about our, uh, transportation department. The state aid reimburses the district ninety percent for most transportation related expenditures, thank goodness. Um, we have fifty three DOC inspected vehicles in our fleet and our buses annually travel over five hundred and thirty five thousand miles. Which is equivalent to traveling around the world more than twenty one times. And then we have the Capital Reserve Fund. The purpose of this is a capital reserve fund allows the district to set aside money for future construction projects, renovations and major repairs. Again, when you think about sustainability and, and uh being good stewards of, of our facilities, this is very, very important. It can be likened to a savings account. Requirements, the creation of a capital reserve fund requires voter approval. Establishing the purpose of reserve, the ultimate amount is powerful term and the source of the funds. Expenses from this reserve also require voter approval and funds added to this reserve will also require Board of Ed approval. Proposition, a separation proposition will be placed, a separate proposition will be placed on the May sixteenth ballot, seeking voter approval to establish a capital reserve fund. With the ultimate cap of this one being ten million dollars over a fifteen year period to address future construction projects, renovations and repairs within the school district. Establishing a capital reserve fund allows the district to continue planning for the long-term facility needs of our district. If anyone is. Okay, so all of those different items will appear, um, to vote for voters, uh, to vote on on May sixteenth, a high school cafeteria. Voting will be from one P M to eight P M. Um, please come out and vote.
So, um, you want to explain the voting process for candidates, uh, for the Board of Education? And. We actually, we normally at this time have the candidates introduce themselves, which is one person here, Conley Hasper. Um, unfortunately, the other three candidates were not able to make it this evening. Tom, would you want to say a couple of things?
I'm here, I guess I should. Um, my name is Tom Tasper, um, up for reelection. Uh, I've lived in the district thirty two, thirty three years. My wife, Narine, and I have three children that all went through the Whitney Point School District. And we're very pleased they have, they've come out with a fantastic education and I want to continue that. I've had an opportunity to be on the school board for a number of years and, um. With my job, I've worked for thirty six years in different schools in the areas of educator. So I have a unique perspective to be able to go into schools and see the physical condition of their schools, also see their programs and a lot of different things. And I must say that I'm very proud to be here and to be on the board and have children have gone through here. Because, uh, many instances, we're very the envy of a lot of our, our neighbors for a lot of different reasons. And I know some of the residents might not think that, but I get to go out and see that, so. I've had the opportunity and the privilege to be here for a number of years. As it was mentioned, there is a very big learning curve to be on the board. Um, I know a lot of the people there in the audience know this, but the educational world is ridiculously different than the real world. And so the people that are on the board that are in the real world, it takes a lot longer to figure this out. Uh, and to, to be able to, uh, see how the district works. So I think I have a nice perspective with that. I'm very proud to be a resident and I would be honored to be able to serve another three years, um, for it. Thank you.
And I would just like to note that the, um, for the voting process this year, in the past several years, we have done for ballots. And this year we will be using voting machines for our voting. See. And then what's the meeting? I think that will do. Okay, the board will suspend the meeting and so one P M on the sixteen, twenty twenty three, I'll try and almost.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Um, that brings us to new business. Um, this evening we have Mr. Christopher M. Hutchings and Mr. Nicholas Spencer. Who will, um, give us a presentation, um, on behalf of Smith Brothers Insurance and the services they provide.
Right, come up here or?
Yeah.
Would you like to use a microphone?
Um.
I can, I'm loud.
I'm loud too.
I think Stacy's going to put your presentation up on the screen.
Perfect, thank you.
If you need to face the screen, you might want to use a microphone.
Use the microphone?
If you're going to face.
Yeah.
It's probably easier that way, we have that little out thing that can go there. Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, yeah, thank you for having us, um, inviting us down here to talk about Smith Brothers, introducing ourselves. And, uh, talking about the services that we provide our school district clients. Um, my name is Chris Hutchings. I've been in the insurance industry ten plus years now, uh, working with municipality, school districts, public entities, businesses, large commercial. Um. And prior to that, I spent six years as a financial statement auditor, uh, in public accounting. So working with school districts as well during that time, so in some capacity, worked with school districts around sixteen, seventeen years.
Uh, thank you as well, I'm Nick Spencer, I'm the Public Enemy Program Manager with Smith Brothers as well as an account manager. So I oversee all of our school district programs, work with a lot of our school district clients, I handle most of the day-to-day stuff and partner with Chris on. Uh, bigger picture things as well, I've been with the ABC for a little over five years and worked with him in insurance my, my whole career.
So we'll go through and we'll talk a little bit about.
Wait into the computer, computer's over there. Find it, too far away, so you can see. This where it's.
Hold on.
That direction.
Wait, I just saved like a minute.
Oh, like that, I did it.
Uh, so a little bit about us and we'll talk about our services. Uh, Smith Brothers Insurance, we're a independent, independently operated organization, top hundred broker in the U S. Uh, we're licensed in every state to do business. We have offices locally in the Groom County, Tyoga County and Rensselaer County. Um, we have over two, overall two hundred and fifty or so employees in New York. We have about twenty five employees locally. Uh, we're better spread out between those offices and we do have, uh, employees with, uh, that are residents and have children in the school district. Um, so we understand the community and the tightness and the commitment of, uh, Whitney Point. Uh, our purpose, helping others, our culture, and I'll talk about it on the next slide. Um, but we manage risks and we help individuals and organizations protect their assets. Um, and we have a commitment to quality and stand standards that we follow and that we ask our clients to let us know if we're not following them. So that we can provide the best services possible for you. This year, we just like to show this in, in all of our meetings and then internally we use this at the start of every meeting. This is our, uh, culture, this is our helping others culture and what is the foundation of it that helps us with our internal clients, which we, our employees and our external clients. And, uh, so we go through, we usually talk about, we're usually hitting one of the boxes here. Um, in one of the meetings, sometimes we hit more than one. You'll see here on our foundation is our team, it's very important, our team is very important to our success and our client success. So we spend a lot of time helping our team and talking about our team and developing our team. Uh, our values, trust, respect, creativity and fun. Uh, we spend a lot of time there, uh, building trust, building respect, making sure we're all levels of the organization respecting each other. Uh, and then fun, you know, it's not always all business, we like to have fun as well. Um, our standards, sales standards, service standards and operating standards. Nick will talk a little bit about service standards on the next slide, but these are the standards we hold ourselves accountable to. So in order for us to be successful, our, our people to be successful, our clients to be successful, we make sure we follow these standards every day. Our deliverables, our client experience and our results, our legacy, sustainably relevant. Um, as long as we feel we're sustainably relevant, um, we can help our clients and, you know, the perpetuation of our organization, we could continue to do that going forward. Um, and that all leads up, all that together to our purpose, which is helping others.
Sure, so I'll talk a little bit about, uh, the service standards. Uh, and this is, it's okay, I can memorize. Um, uh, so it's be sure and that's kind of our slogan, we want our clients to be sure. Uh, so we use this as a helpful way to remember it. Um, it all starts with belief, you have to believe in our philosophy and our enterprise risk management approach. And we feel that it offers a lot of value to our clients and that's what ultimately gets the best result. Uh, so we strive to be experts in our field and, uh, we do it all with a smile. Um, we like to leave from a place of understanding, you want to understand our clients' needs and make sure that we're, uh, you know, giving them exactly what they need. Um, responsiveness is a huge part of that, we know how urgent things can be day to day. And, uh, when you need something, even just a quick what-if question, we get those all the time. And, you know, having that peace of mind to have a quick response is, is so critical. And, uh, ultimately efficiency as well is the last piece of that, um, to work efficiently, making sure that, uh, you know, you're able to deliver that responsiveness and, uh, do it in an efficient way.
Your next slide, the, the slide is enterprise risk management.
We like to consider ourselves, um, enterprise risk advisors or risk managers. And that just means we like to work on the whole picture for our clients and look at the whole picture and help where we can. Um, you'll see some different categories there, uh, business insurance, that's what we're talking about here tonight, that would be your property casualty, your, your buildings, your liability. Um, different levels of liability, commercial auto, that's where that falls. Surety, that would be if you, any bonds or. That's where that falls, surety, that would be if you, any bonds are required at any time, we can help with that. Employee benefits, as we talked about on the previously slides, you know, employee benefits, group benefits, senior benefits, we could help with that for your employees. Personal insurance, if you ever need us to have any of our personal lines, team members come out and talk to your employees, your members of your teams, talk about their personal insurance. We're always willing to help and do that as well. And then I think the last one is risk management.
Yep, you are good.
Financial services, that's 401Ks, retirement accounts, we can help with that as needed. You know, if you need that personally as well, that people need help with that, we can help. And then risk management, we help with HR issues, legal issues, OSHA, and those sorts of things. We have a pretty true risk management, which is part of Smith Brothers, that can help with those issues when they arise and give focus and give suggestions to help.
So you can't see here, but so this next exhibit is a sample of the client service plan. So this is just, I don't need to go into this in detail, but I just wanted to show that this is something that we do for all of our school district clients. And what it is, it's basically just an annual plan of what the services that we offer and which ones are most relevant to you, and make sure that we know how frequently you want them to be done. And then each year, as they happen, they get checked off, and it's all signed off on. So that way, we all know that we're all on the same page, nothing slips through the cracks, and you know that you're getting everything that's been promised.
And some of those, just to know, some of those services, they won't apply to your district, some of them will. And that's not an entire list, if there's other things you need for us to help you with, we can do that, special projects, trainings, all that sort of thing, we can help build that for you.
Yeah, customized to your exact.
And then the last slide, this second last slide, those are our current school district clients. All of our school district clients are with Uta National, which we're with right now. We feel that that's the strongest program for schools. And so we make sure that all of our schools are in the best place. We have a strong relationship with Uta National, so all the way to the top, the CEO, we have a personal relationship with them. So whenever we need something, if there's an emergency, or we have to have a hard discussion with them, we can do that, and it usually turned out pretty well. In those cases. Between us and our predecessors that we have working on our schools at our offices, I think our earliest school district was nineteen sixty-four, which was vessel. So we've been doing schools a long time and really have an expertise in it. And that's really just us in a nutshell, and we did it pretty quick for you, and we got a lot going on. But that's Smith Brothers and Nick and myself, and I'll open up to any questions that you have.
So you're not providing an assurance, you're kind of like the broker, you're the financial institution, that's a good.
Yeah, we're the broker, we'll work with you, with you at Uta National on those files to make sure you have everything you need and you're comfortable with.
That's who we currently have, is Uta National, we just have a different broker through Tricon right now. No other questions? You guys are too easy.
We, we did that to make it harder. And you passed, so that's.
Teacher educators who wanted to see if you could do it without the power.
With the mic, with the microphone and the power.
Yeah.
We thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to come talk and introduce ourselves and look forward to working.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, there is no need for an executive session at this time. However, we will be having one after the regular meeting ends. There is no correspondence, there are no policies for first reading, there are no policies for second reading. That brings us to our first opportunity for comments from the public. Be aware that there is a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting as well. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period for our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions, concerns at a future meeting, or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. The district clerk will be keeping track of questions and make sure that they are passed on to the appropriate people. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. The board will now entertain public comments. Each individual speaker is allowed in three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Please state your name and residency before you begin. Is there anybody who would like to speak this evening? Okay, that brings us to commendations.
Okay, we have lots of commendations, and there's so many things happening in this season, you know, in Edinburgh, the latter part of the school year in the spring, there's lots of exciting things happening, so I feel I'll pretty well listen to this meeting and next meeting. The first commendation, though, is for Dr. Christine Woodall, Board Trustee for the recognition by NISBA's recognition program. She received two awards, the Board Achievement Award and the Board Excellence Award. Just gonna read what I received. The New York State School Board Association Recognition Program is designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. Our records indicate that one or more or more of your board's members have earned one of our board achievement awards ranging from level one to level four. The program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance and knowledge and skills. It is comprised of four achievement levels that are reached by accumulated points for participating in NISBA training, workshops, events, and activities, as well as for top taking on board-related roles such as board president and NISBA advocacy liaison. And please note the annual cutoff date is March thirty-first, and we honestly got that date because Chris Woodall.
I haven't seen these yet.
Yes, was awarded. He's beautiful. A recognition. There you go. Both of them.
I didn't add any more after you've already talked about the school board association.
Wow, this is because the school board was able to put us as on NISBA, a community. And so I've been trying to take as many conferences and stations that I could do to learn more stuff than I need to learn. I appreciate it, thank you so much. And you've taken on some major roles in the region. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Woodall.
Very cool.
Congratulations. We thank you for taking your work so seriously, certain benefits the school district. Next, our commendations is Whitney Point PTA for a successful mother-and-son game night for grade pre-K through fifth grade. And it was held on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The high school transitional class, skills class, for cleaning up garbage around our school grounds for Earth Day. Robert Poncharan, I always have to slow down when I say his name, Turner Construction, who's here every day overseeing all that's happening. Sabrina Shirley and Bobby Luzier of State Companies, Martin Corella of Lewis and Tana and Sons, and Cole McMullin and Ray Millard Evans of Evans Mechanical for speaking to this Landers class to teach them about construction industry careers. Very awesome of them. Commercials also go to high school art student, Lana Baxter, for having her reel thrown to candor in a cup set, selected to be in a national competition at the American Museum of Ceramic Art in California. Awesome.
They were very, they were very incredible.
Yes, very incredible, truly. Mrs. Guzman, this is Prokop, faculty and staff, for the week of celebration of the young child for pre-K students. And, you know, that's student Portland students and Dr. Woodall, as well as Portland Cooperative Extension, and actually, there were lots and lots of people who participated in that. It was a tremendous night and really well attended, the celebration of the young child. City Portland students and the President's Chocolate Cake classes during the week, song and dance, and when our partnership day yogurt parfaits with the students. It was just an awesome week, so thank you for everybody who was involved with that.
And Joanne, we have donations going to all the humane societies in Flint.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Students did helpers Wednesday, and they're donating several products, it was.
Wonderful. Commercials also voted as minor TRA literacy coordinator, but also to Ms. Mrs. Snook, Mrs. Tuttle, Mrs. Sportsline, Mrs. Hackinson, for the family literacy night at the TRA. It was an awesome event, and we had Lucas Kaczynski, he was a vocal author and artist. And I don't know, is he one of your students? Yeah, one of your students, yes. For presenting his children's book on Endicott Johnson and all the impacts in our, in our region of Endicott Johnson. It was really very cool. Whitney Point High School graduate, Alyssa Ellison Jones, from Wild Daisy Acres, for bringing her business to the classroom and working in the high school transitional skills class to teach them about production with hands-on experience making and jarring sugar scrub. As I said, there's lots going on, so we will have more commendations in the next.
Okay, old business, we have none. Approval of the consent agenda, may have a motion? Thank you, Brian, and a second?
Sergeant.
I got Tom right in my ear, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the Board of Education meeting minutes for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, may have a motion? I heard Chris and Eddie. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Approve the Board of Education meeting minutes for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, may have a motion? Thank you, Tom, and a second?
All right.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools for reasons of economy and efficiency in the operation of the district and the district schools, the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District hereby creates one new full-time tenure-track elementary education teacher position effective May second, twenty twenty-three. Their title will be elementary education teacher, and it will be in the tenure area of elementary education teacher. May have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
So this position is an addition due to larger class sizes and a grade level that's moving up. And we, it's good that our numbers are high, but, you know, we try to keep our class sizes reasonable. So this position would actually be in fifth grade.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of John Burnett, Maintenance A Head Cleaner, effective March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, may have a motion?
Certainly.
Thank you, Brian, and a second? Thank you, Eddie. Any questions or comments?
So you may know that Naomi Collins moved to the high school to take a Lindy position up here. And John Burnett, who has worked in the TRA for a good long time, has stepped up in this, taken on the role of the lead maintenance person in that building, and he's doing a great job. Great.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Sarah Ames, Part-Time Food Service Helper, effective May third, twenty twenty-three, may have a motion? I heard Tom and Chris. Any questions or comments?
So this position was created, Leah Friedman moved to be the secretary in the CEA office. She vacated the food service position and Sarah Ames.
And she's doing a great job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Leanne Nye, Full-Time Cleaner, effective May eighth, twenty twenty-three, may have a motion?
Certainly.
Thank you, Brian, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
So this, Leanne has been taking over for John's position, John Burnett's position.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approve the four-year probationary appointment of Olivia Driscoll, Elementary Education Teacher and the Elementary Education Teacher tenure, effective September first, twenty twenty-three. The probationary period of September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section three zero one-two of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to Education Law Section three zero one-two dash D of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. May have a motion?
Certainly.
I heard Eddie and Chris. Any questions or comments?
So Olivia, so elementary positions are elementary positions, but for this coming year, Olivia will be going into that fifth grade position that we just created. And we are very excited to have her join our team, and she's here.
Do you have anything you'd like to let us know?
Sure, I'm very excited to be.
Good job, standing up.
Which I graduated from. My mom inspired me to become a teacher. So I've had a great experience going through college, and I've learned so many new things. But what also matters a lot to me is being an educator within my own community and better support and be that extra person for the students. It's very exciting.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that we actually have a pretty good percentage of teachers and employees who graduated from the school who purposely come back to work here.
And I said this before, but I would say it again. That matters very much, but the thing that really is impressive is that they go through a strenuous interview process, and they're really not, I mean, they come out on top. I mean, all of these hires that we, including Olivia, she did an excellent job.
Stephanie, I have some comments.
Hmm?
I have a comment. If I don't cry. So I agree, bringing our homegrown back to us is an unbelievably passionate thing. is an unbelievably passionate thing that we see on this campus. Olivia has known me since she was in fifth grade because she was part of the group of students about twelve years ago that we decided to try to do online tutoring with, with Tom Crowley. That was considered such a great new inventive thing now, and now we have online school, right? That's happening. She's been part of innovation at Whitney Point. She's continued to be part of innovation at Whitney Point. I've been blessed to have her as a student for two years. And, um, I have learned so much from this online lady about being a better professor and a better teacher. And I am so proud that she's being hired by the school this week. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good Brian.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, let's move to the first item on the addenda. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approve the four-year probationary appointment of Carleen Smith, English teacher and the English teacher tenure effective September first, twenty twenty-three. The probationary period of September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section three zero one-two of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to education law section three zero one-two dash D of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher should not be eligible for tenure at that time. May have a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
Uh, this, uh, position is, um, Barbara Welsh's position. So, um, we are happy, uh, Carleen also, um, had a rigorous, uh, application process and interview process and, um, we know she's gonna be filling big shoes in the high school, so, but we're excited to have her come to board.
Great. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um. Poll clerk resolution, approve the following list of poll workers and rate of pay for the twenty twenty-three annual meeting for the sole purpose of the budget, school vehicle, capital reserve fund, and Board of Education member vote with a rate of pay of four dollars and twenty cents per hour. Phyllis Edwards.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. What did I say? More. Oh, sorry. Fourteen dollars and twenty cents per hour. Thank you. Phyllis Edwards, Susan Ellison, and Kathy Knacki. May have a motion?
Aye.
Um, Chris and Tom? Any questions or comments?
So as was mentioned earlier, we're going to have, um, voting machines, uh, this year. And so, uh, we have two people that are approved by the Board of Elections, but facing three. Oh, on the agenda, right. Uh, so three people and then, um, one other person is gonna be a poll worker.
Um, will they have, so they've already received training on how to use the electronic? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I would hate for them to come in at noon and all of a sudden have to go or one and be running the machines that they're not familiar with, so. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, let's move and finish the addenda, please. Um, we're going to approve, um, another, a worker for the rate of pay of fourteen dollars and twenty cents per hour. Carol Edgleston. May have a motion?
Aye.
Um, was that you, Brian?
How many?
Oh, that was Eddie. I'm sorry. And a second?
Awesome.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the instructional calendar for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. May have a motion?
So.
Um, Chris and, was that you, Brian?
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Uh, I think that the only, um, significant thing, and it has happened before, and the fact just a few years ago, actually, um, the last day of school for students, um, is the twenty-sixth of June. Um, we will have graduation, which is a Wednesday, and we will have graduation on Friday night because family comes into town. So that's just a little bit odd. That only happens once in a great while. But.
And only if we don't have to use any of those other days.
Well, right. I mean, in that way, it, it is better. There's a little more cushion there before graduation.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Are we gonna see a July graduation date?
You had to. You had to go there.
Uh, my birthday's in the June. I'm just like, we get it every once in a while when we pass that.
Hmm, yeah, but hopefully not. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the district holidays for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. May have a motion?
Aye.
Um, was that you, Brian? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
Which is a significant, pretty standard.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the payroll dates for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. May have a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eddie. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the following items for disposal. Um, just a note that, uh, they will be going through Mel and Son Benassi auctioneers. Any items not accepted will be disposed through scrap, e-waste, or other viable method to maximize district return. We have three combination ranges, an office desk, and an Avenger two eight one zero D auto scrubber. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That brings us to superintendent's updates.
Um, I think just one note is actually not from me, but it's from, um, Julia Gerina from our last meeting. She just wanted to let you know, um, some of the details that you had inquired about. Um, so participation, uh, in that, uh, KC data that she shared at the last meeting, the survey data. Um, we had two hundred and nine second and third graders participate and seventy-five parents and forty-six faculty and staff.
Could you say that again, Joanne?
Two hundred and nine second and third graders, seventy-five parents, and forty-six faculty and staff.
Thank you.
Okay. And the new survey is, is about to be sent out, I think, in the next day or so. Um, and then I, the only other update I think, uh, of significance is that like there are, there are many things, um, happening around the district. Um, and we commended, uh, people involved, but, um, uh, teachers and staff, um, across the district are, um, gearing up for, to sort of make up for lost time and make sure that we've got, uh, lots of activities and celebrations for the end of the school year. Um, we are, um, as you know, taking a trip to Philadelphia again this year. Thank goodness. Yay. So, um, really trying to make sure that we are getting back in the groove and back to normal as much as possible. So, lots of things to celebrate.
That brings us to our second opportunities for comments from the public. Um, please remember that the, uh, what I read before holds stands for this, uh, stands for this opportunity as well. Is there anybody who would like to speak up? Um, this comes now to the Board of Education comments. Um, I would just like to say that I attended the presidents and vice presidents, um, meeting at BOSI's. Um, Chris was there as well. And I would, at, at some point, if I ever catch up with myself, I will send on to the rest of the board. We had a very awesome presentation, um, about a therapy dog. And there are several districts in our area that have therapy dogs. Um, and I do think it might be something that we should look into.
We've had.
Okay.
It's magical.
Yeah. Um, but it would be nice if we could do that again. Um, the dog comes to school with its owner slash trainer. Um, I think she does three days a week. Um, it's in the classroom, it's in the hallways. Um, the animal is, you know, there are students who just need to have that connection with an animal. And it's a way of calming anybody down, whether they're adults or children. And I do think that it would be really great if we could find somebody who's interested in doing that again. Um, but I will make sure that I, Chris, unless you beat me to it.
I got it. I have reported.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we also have a current teacher and that's a dog. Danielle, thank you.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. What I liked about the, um, presentation is that it had, she had a package so that the board members could look at ensuring insurance around it as a school community and making sure that you're protecting yourself.
And also, yeah, like that. The, and also, um, sample policies to have on board to make sure that the district and, and students and everybody are protected. And, um, it was very interesting.
And I think exactly, I'm right. They come in and they'll go from class to class. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, and once you get, get part of the group, like if there is, uh, a stressful time in the district, maybe you're the student, maybe there's a tragic event. They can actually bring multiple handlers with their dogs to the school to help soothe the students, which I thought was also another thing that we can look at because I really like the policy examples and just really looking at it as a whole, as a community. Yeah, it was very good.
And she also went over all of the different, um, qualifications and also the different, um,
certifications.
certifications that the dogs can get and what, you know, which ones are recommended, which ones are not quite recommended because some of them are more rigorous than others in terms of getting the certification for whether the dog is appropriate for the school setting or not.
So you're gonna share that with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because they made sure to send, we got paper copies, but they did make sure they sent everything out, um, digitally so we can share it with everyone.
Right.
So I'm done.
I would just like to say, um, I mean, I was a part of the celebration of the young child with the elementary building, but I just want to thank all the community partners that we had. It was so amazing. I mean, um, Stephanie was there with the library, but then we had, um, the health department, we had PTA. We're gonna miss somebody, so somebody help me out.
Northern Room Cares.
Room Cares. Uh, it was just, and my students were just so amazed. We counted a hundred and ten that came through the door, but I bet you it was a hundred and fifty because when people miss sign-up sheet. We gave away at least fifty books. We had a hundred some books to give away. So just it felt so good to be back into a community event situation and really seeing families, children, everybody just having such a wonderful time. So, and Nate the Great did a great job. So I just, uh, appreciate it. Community schools, they helped out so much. Beth Whitaker, I, I just wanna say, Lauren, uh, kudos. Um, just keeping us all organized and making sure we all stay on task. I just appreciate everything that happened.
And the activities that were there for the kids to participate in were fun, educational, and varied.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was just, it wasn't just like, you know, one or two stations where you could color or something, but it went from you could sit and listen to a story to, um, you could role play with an ice cream truck. Um, or there were lots of other things and, and I loved that the kids got to make an order for an ice cream sundae. There was a form, they could circle what they wanted on their sundae and present it and they would, and they loved it.
Yeah.
Everything.
Thank you, everyone.
I had one quick comment. It was just, um, I know Chris had mentioned about the School Board Association and, um, it might not sound really good to say that we're one of two schools that haven't been involved. So I just wanted to fill in a little of the history of why. I know, uh, quite a while ago, uh, I know many of the people in the room are probably aware, but it was a very, very dark time here where we were losing lots of staff. They were being let go. Um, because we, uh, lacked funding and the board thought it would be very, very irresponsible to spend, and, and that's a pretty good amount of money for our district to be in the School Board Association. So that, that's why we weren't. And so we were one of two, but we had felt that that was.